We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. For tonight's invocation, we've got Pastor Ed Hebbie from the Church of the Nazarene. Pastor?
Father, we thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to come together to do business for the city of Taylorville. We thank you, Father, for your wisdom that you impart to each of us. I pray tonight that you would especially be close to each elected member of this council and our mayor, that you would give them the wisdom to run our city with grace and with love and with the wisdom that only you can impart. I pray that you would be with each person that's here tonight, be with their extended families. Lord, we pray your blessings upon our families and on our cities and upon this country. In Jesus' name we ask it. Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sean Bertle.
Here.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Here.
Rob Heatherling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coontz.
Here.
John Lawrence.
Here.
Martin Voda. Earl Walters.
Here. Okay. Seven aldermen present, one absent. First, I'd like to have a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings and public hearing list on tonight's agenda under the title of Omnibus Vote Designation. Alderman Dorchinez, President, Second Alderman Jones. Discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, of the minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the public hearing held September 4th, 2012, minutes of the regular meeting held September 4th, 2012, minutes of the Emergency Services Committee meeting held September 6th, 2012, minutes of the Personnel Committee meeting held September 6th, 2012, minutes of the Water Environmental Committee meeting held September 13th, 2012, and minutes of the Lake Airport Committee meeting held September 13th, 2012. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Alderman Bertle, you have a second.
Second.
Second Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Robert Heatherling.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to discussions and our motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in a whole and part the following listed motions, ordinances, or resolutions. And the first thing I want to do is open the bids for number 26 at Line Eye Drive. We've been dealing with this thing for months and months, it seems like. We only have one bid. It says, "Encloses a bid in the amount of $1,000 for the property of the city of Taylorville", which is number 26 on Line Eye Drive. And that's for Mr. Eric Miller. Now, with that, again, that's the only bid we have, so we have to make the decision whether we're going to accept that bid, or we do have the right to reject the bid if we feel that that's too low. So I'd entertain a motion, one way or the other.
I'll make the motion, we accept the bid.
Motion to accept the bid by Alderman Coontz.
I'll second it for discussion.
Second Alderman Bertle, go ahead with discussion, whoever. Who wants to discuss it? Alderman Heatherling.
What's the appraised value?
I believe it's about $3,750 or something like that.
And one other question, how much money does the city have in it?
Well, it'd be probably well over $20,000 if you clean up of the house, so...
It's a moneymaker.
Yeah, Alderman Coontz.
I just recommend that we approve this, just for a simple reason, is we've gone through this for, like the mayor said, months and months and months. I doubt we're going to get anything better than what we got now, and I seriously doubt anybody's really going to give too much of a higher bid. That's all I've got.
Any other comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones.
No.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
No.
Rob Heatherling.
No.
Okay, that motion fails. Four against, three in favor. So with that said, then... Your Honor. Yes, Alderman Walters.
City Attorney, does the mayor have a little on that?
He does, but it doesn't make any...
But that would just...
...in Walters. In fact, it needed a three-fourths of the corporate authorities holding office, so it actually needed seven affirmative votes in order to pass.
Okay, thank you.
So are we basically back to square one on that and start the whole process over again, or...
That's up to the council.
I don't know what kind of options there are. Alderman Bertle.
How much money do we have in this process each time?
Well, it's a couple hundred dollars for advertising each time.
Would we be better off just to hang on to the property and mow it ourselves until real estate?
George isn't here tonight.
Volunteer him in his absence. If we're spending $15,000, $2,000 pop every time we advertise this thing, we're already in the hole nine for the demolition, but trying to get it sold.
Sure.
If all we can get is a $1,000 bid on us, we can mow it for $1,000 for quite a while.
Let me ask this, now that we have attempted to sell this twice and we've had a bidding tonight, does that in any way open up the city to negotiate with somebody directly? Or have we jumped any hurdles that will now... If we can talk to somebody that's interested and arrive at a price that's a little higher that we could agree on, is that something we can do, or do we have to do the bid?
We don't have to do the bid. The statute provides that the city can do it via Realtor, they can do it in-house, so no.
Okay. So when you say do it in-house, if we've got somebody interested and they give us a bid that I can ring back before this council, we could do it that way?
We... Yes.
Okay.
That's under a different, whole different section, and that's the one where you have to... That's the one where you have to get 80% of the MAI, you know, appraisal, so...
Are we going to do the auction tonight? We would have done that anywhere there would have been, too, just see if it increases then.
That's a good question. Again, since we only had one bid, and historically what we've done is then open that up for the auction process, can an individual bid it up himself if he's the only?
Sure. I mean, I don't know why he would, but sure.
Well...
Well, I mean, in this particular situation that he...
Sure.
To go home with it, yes.
Right, right. Well, I guess that's an option.
Is that person here this evening?
I believe he is.
Yes.
Would you care to increase your bid? Okay, not at this time.
You know, I just wondered because it bugged up against my property in the back, and I was just wondering because a thousand dollars is all I can get together, so that was it.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, well, move on. Okay, what I'd like...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but...
Go ahead.
Just so everybody knows, we didn't have to formally reject it because we didn't accept it, okay?
Okay. So we're ready to move on.
Yes.
All right. All right, the next two items I'd like to hold for the Airport Committee. I have Alderman Walters handling the two resolutions when he gets to the Airport Committee motions. What I would like to do now is, and we've got several people here that are concerned with the annexations, and I'd like to open the floor to them tonight. I realize that we have the three minutes at the end of the meeting, but at that point it does no one any good because the vote's already been taken. So I'd entertain a motion to open the floor to the audience if someone would make that. Second Alderman Bertle. Second Alderman Walters. Discussions? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Okay, the folks out in the audience, if you would like to make a comment or ask questions regarding the proposed annexations, I'd ask you just to kind of raise your hand, stand up and give your name and your address, just for the record, and then make your comments or ask your questions. Would anyone like to do that now? Don't be shy. Yes, please stand up, give your name, and yeah, you, yeah.
Tony Hunt, Alwaxton, White House, going into town. I just question, you're bringing this in, you want to bring us into the city, but you don't want to bring us to, why is that?
Well, you know, I want to ask for the whole group, but the simple answer is we don't have money to give you the sewer. A lot of people have been in town paying the higher taxes for decades now, and they still don't have sewer. Because they have been paying those higher rates, someone else in the city did get sewer. You know, it's one of those things, trying to increase the revenue, and eventually we put the sewers in when and where we can, where we can afford it, and where it's most prudent at the time. And that's kind of the situation we're in right now. I wish I could look you in the eye and say, you know, within five years you'll have sewer, but I can't do that, that wouldn't be honest. I just don't know. If there's something that goes on out there in your direction that the council feels would benefit the city as a whole, then you might get lucky, and then the sewers might be out there quicker. If any alderman wants to reply to that, Alderman Jones?
Just on one basis that I can think of offhand, the south side of Burton Eddie, where it's already in the city. The city did not provide those sewers, the residents of the city provided those sewers through a bond, and then they paid that bond back. So the city did not expend... Well, I mean, they did expend funds, but they didn't expend funds just to put the sewer out into the south side of Burton Eddie, which is one of the arguments that people have told me, well, the city provided them sewers, and the city did not provide them sewers. They actually provided those sewers themselves, and then there was a charge on those taxes, and then that, over time, paid that bond off to do those sewers. There are folks out on the, as the mayor said, for decades, out on Old 29 that are in the city, and Alderman Lawrence is one of those people that lives across the river that's actually in the city, and he doesn't have any city sewers either. I wish that we could provide city sewers for everybody. Unfortunately, we don't have that revenue stream to get everybody, including some of the places with the hole in the donut. There are some of the places that we have annexed that have been hole in the donut that already have the city sewer and the city water as well. It's one of those things, when the money is available, we hope to put those sewers in.
So, another question. All the money you're going to gain from annexing and seeing where's all that money going to go? Other places?
Well, you'll have to ask either the Finance Committee Chairman or the mayor.
Sure. Well, and again, no one knows. We will have, as a group, decide where it's needed, where it could be used, and that's how it's done. It's just, it's one of those things, again, I think the biggest question we have is because there are several spots now, because of some annexations we made earlier in the year, that's why you're here tonight, but there's other places in town, as he described, that are hole in the donut, that have been that way for decades, and it's hard to argue when, you know, one group, you know, is not paying the higher taxes, when on every side of them, everyone else is looking at them and saying, "Why are you charging this higher and letting them get away with it?" So the idea of fairness comes into this a little bit, as far as us trying to close the hole in the donuts throughout the town, and I believe that's what the council as a whole is trying to accomplish now, is kind of clean it up, those ones that have gotten by for, like I say, decades with it, they're trying to bring them in and make it fair for everyone that's inside the city's limits.
Now, everybody around us that made us a donut, they all have sewers?
Well, not the farmland that we brought in that actually boxed in, the farmland doesn't have sewers, but...
All the additions he did online about road access, are they on that?
Well, I'm not... They probably do, I mean, as far as, I know they got water, but I think that different houses may still be unseptic, I'm not sure.
They got septic.
They're on water.
Yeah?
They're on sewer.
They're on sewer.
So you brought them in and gave them sewer, that you're going to bring us in and I'll give them sewer?
Well, I don't know that we gave them sewer, I think they paid for the sewer.
They paid for it.
Mr. Broaddus, I believe, at that time, paid to have that run out there.
And it runs out to the end of his property.
Right.
According to our ordinance, when you run a sewer in, it runs out to the end of the property. And the reason that it's out there was when those properties were to the east, which you guys are properties to the east of that, that sewer is supposed to be low enough that hopefully you can hook onto it with gravity, if not, it forced main up to a manhole at the end of the property. That's the reason that we have people, when they put it in, put that sewer into the end of their property, so that the next person can join onto that without any added expense.
So Dick, I would ask, I mean, is that line something they can hook onto or not? Is that a possibility?
They'll ask to be ran first.
Okay.
Ask to be ran for our Potions Street.
Okay. So where are those houses out there, where are they hooked to now?
There's the houses that Broaddus put in hooked to the sewer back there.
Okay.
Which Bryant and all them hooked to the sewer which runs behind their houses.
Okay. Got it. So there's just no connection that comes back down, back towards town this way yet?
We're a quarter mile away.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Cherry, 1177 Langley Road. I have, I mean, I understand there's really nothing we can do out there with that kind of stuff. I do things out of my home, I have a haunted shed every year. If anybody is taking a grandkids there or kids there, I'm wondering if I'm required to follow the mowing ordinances or the stuff that would affect what I do out there and that every year. I know it's a small thing, but what rules are we... Since we are a rural area, what rules are we stuck with as far as the city does?
Well, this may be an over generality, but I believe probably in 99% of the cases, you will be subject to the same rules that everyone else in the city is. And if you've got a particular event out there, like the haunted house or something, I mean, you know, that's something we could probably work with if we have an understanding of this, this is why you're not doing something for a short period of time.
I do it, I mean, I let the weeds grow up to your chest, so that you can walk a trail down through it. That's trivial, I know, it's just something that I do, I enjoy doing, I'm a very core community.
Sure.
I donate to the Taylorville Food Bank, there's no money that's ever exchanged hands in the city.
Sure. I would, my suggestion would that be something you would bring to the committee and just discuss, and again, you know, we've got enough flexibility, we're in special cases like that, we can make an exception as long as it's understood and documented is the main thing, so...
I'd have to go and ask for a permit or something if you go...
Well, basically, I don't know if you'd call it variance or what to the ordinance or something, we'd be making an exception for a period of time with an understanding of why we're doing that, so that we can explain to other citizens, oh, this is why there's an exception, he's using it for this reason, and, you know, it's been voted on by the council, and they've agreed to allow that to happen. Again, but that's why you have to go through the processes again, so it's transparent and everyone knows why you're making exceptions to this one property, and we can explain that to them.
Another question I wanted to know is, you know, is there anything that's going to be, since we're, I have a pole barn, my advisor's required to uphold some type of city ordinances for that pole barn, these existing buildings or anything?
No, again, I wish the planning, I wish the zoning officer was here, but my understanding is, no, we will not go backwards, and you're not going to change something to bring it up to code. Now, if you're going to have new construction, that's where the new codes might come in, yes.
Next question, I heard that there's a road supposed to go in to connect 104 to 48. What is, what is, is there some sort of planning to bring, take a road through our area?
Well, I mean, certainly no short-term planning at all. I mean, that's one of the things that maybe if somebody looked at a plan and saying, hey, where would we like to be in 20 years, does it make sense to do that? You know, that's something they may look at, but it's nothing that's going to happen anytime soon because we just don't have any money, I can tell you that.
What about fire hazards? Are we going to get the least of those since there is a water line out there?
That's a good question. Mr. Spiegel, is that something we discuss at a water committee? Is that...
Sure.
It is one of those things, we have to discuss the need for it, and again, I'd have to have somebody input from the fire department on where the closest one currently is and how much that will help to put an initial one in.
That's a good question.
Good questions.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I was going to do your... What's his name?
Yeah, could you give your name just for the...
Lee Greer.
Okay, Lee?
1181 East Langley Road.
Okay.
If we go into the city, what is Taylorville going to do for us to tackle? I mean, I know we all got, this is all we want.
Sure.
You know, we like to have, you know, the real estate of our rate stack, we want to get a water bill over, that's what we do.
Right.
But the water stands out there on Mike's road when it rains, it's better to foot call. Are they going to do something about ditches out there?
Well, actually, in the last year, we've done quite a bit in that direction, and I know that the...
That would be...
Well, it's had to help a little bit. Now, some of it's still being done, the new drainage tile that's been running through there. I mean, that's just been done here in the last, what, three months? And so, and we haven't had a whole lot of rain, we've had a couple come here lately, but obviously through the summer, we didn't get much rain.
The range we have had, I mean, it's put that road down.
Sure, sure, yeah.
And that backs up everybody's base.
Again, well, and it's one of those things, again, that road itself, depending on which section of road, is still not the city's, so we have to work with the township and everything else, and we are actively working with them to try and address that. I know the township did some work out there. Again, I'd almost have to...
Just for a correction, where that road is all ours now?
All the way to?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then, that's something we'll have to look at. I mean, I know they did, the township did some work.
They did.
We didn't exactly agree 100% with what they did, but...
I've talked with Superintendent Wiseman, we have some ditch work that we need to do out there on both sides of the Langleyville Road.
So, yeah, I mean, that's one thing we'll be working on, expending funds to try and address. Again, do we have enough money to address all at once? I can't guarantee that, but we'll do what we can with what we got.
Otherwise, you put the sewer in, C Street, all we should have flooded that like more.
Yeah, well, the one thing that's the big difference, anyway, saw the rain, is the rain doesn't stand nearly as long as it did. I mean, it used to, there's been places in town where I know it'd be 12 inches deep at night when I go to bed, and as a kid, to wake up and, you know, it'd still be 12 inches deep in the morning. Now, most of that stuff dissipates, you know, in a couple hours, so it's flowing faster. It's just like putting a drain in your sink. When that rain comes that hard and that fast, it doesn't matter how clear that sink is, it's just not going to handle it, it's going to flood for a while, but it drains faster, and that should be good for everybody.
Is there a gas line out there?
Gas line? That one, we're not in the gas business, at least not yet, so...
I don't know if you're going to run that gas out because...
Yeah.
Yeah, on both ends, you'll be...
Yeah.
Two thousand gallons, one here.
Your Honor, that would have to be taken up by Mr. Glasby, one of the head officials with Ameren. See, Ameren controls all the gas lines, not the city. So it'd have to be something that Ameren would want to put in their budget and then schedule on a work basis to do. So we wouldn't have any play in that whatsoever, that would be Ameren.
The major part of the gas sewer that's all there.
I'm not sure about gas, but sewer, yeah.
Anyone else? See, no one else, I'd entertain a motion to close the floor. Oops, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
All the other guys asked all the questions, I just confirmed that except one, and that speed limit on the line of Road 11, it shouldn't be at 30 mile an hour like all the streets in town, instead of the racial way like a good amount.
Sure. Well, that's definitely something we can bring to the street committee and discuss it, and see if we can put that in ordinance form.
We've, Your Honor, we've had a number of complaints for years, although that road wasn't always ours, about the high speed limit, and I personally would favor reducing that speed limit.
From Broaddus, whatever.
Yeah, we have to look at and see, but yes, yeah.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Terry Midland, Paul, Langley Road, sorry. If you're going to get city water, will they, will the city pay for the construction?
For the water itself?
For the digging and for the pipe and...
Well, usually the city provides the water main to you, and then you have to connect it to your house, is that right, Mr. Spiegel?
No, 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 it's extended, it's called.
Okay, so the owner has to pick it all up? Okay, because we're extending, there's nothing existing there, is what you're saying? Okay. There's your answer. Any other questions? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to close the floor. Alderman Coontz, second. Alderman Lawrence, discussion or comments? Hearing done, all is in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Okay, now we've got the ordinance, annexing certain territories surrounded or nearly surrounded by property which is incorporated within the city of Taylorville, we'd make a motion to approve that. Alderman Dorchinez.
Second.
Second Alderman Coontz. Additional discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Your Honor, I respectfully abstain because of a business interest.
Okay.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Bernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes, six in favor and one abstention. Next, we have an ordinance approving a contract with Simec LLC, doing business as Southern Illinois Municipal Electric Cooperative, to service the city of Taylorville as exclusive consultant for its electric aggregation program and for engagement of the lowest-cost electric wholesale supplier. I'd entertain that motion. Alderman Lawrence, discussion or comments?
Question.
Alderman Heatherling, well, let me get a second.
I'm sorry.
Second by anybody?
Second.
Okay, second Alderman Walters, go ahead with your question.
In just looking at this, in Section 3C, it talks about the length of the governmental contract. That's something that we would negotiate with the Simec, is that correct?
Right, well, with Simec and the companies they're representing, it was like, they'll bring, you know, something for one year, two years, and three years, different rates probably, and they will give us the option of picking which one of those we want.
we want. So, you know, we'll be, if we feel rates good, and we think rates are going to go up, we might want to go with the three-year. And, and the flip side on the other, if we think the rates are going to go down sometime soon, we might want to keep it short, take advantage of it, so...
And then, in section 7A, it speaks of at least a million dollars of liability for the size of this contract. Is a million dollars sufficient? Or is that standard in these?
I, I think it's pretty standard, but I mean, basically, they're just...
There's, there's not a liability, really, on what they're doing for us in the grand scheme of things. All they are is basically a conduit between the city and these electricity providers. So, when I read that, to be quite honest with you, early Heatherling, I thought it was ample.
Yeah, the question, great.
You know, that's kind of a new, somewhat new, so I mean, if somebody knows more about it than I do, yeah, but I, it's my understanding, and I've, I've had these speeches in, what, three different municipalities now, and this one's consistent with the other two.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
On that insurance, that insurance, it's just, it's errors and omissions, is it not?
That's what it is, it's errors and omissions.
Well, there's also a million dollars worth of general liability in the, in C.
Seven C.
But you're correct. It's basically, A, it's errors and omissions, and C, it's a million dollars.
Good. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero. Now, we have a motion to approve blocking the 800 block of Taylor Boulevard on October 13th, 2012, from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM for a block party.
Your Honor, I'll make that motion and speak to the issue.
Alman Walters, second, Alman Heatherling, go ahead with your comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was contacted by Mr. Mike Mann at 821 Taylorville Boulevard, and he called me on September the 9th to ask about having a block party between Pauline Street and Park Avenue. And I informed him that it would be real close to put that on the 4th Thursday of the month, and then have it approved or discussed in detail on the first Monday of the next following month, to have it on October the 13th. So, they'd like to have a block party in that 800 block only in City Park Edition, Saturday, October the 13th, from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And I talked to the alderman that's present in that ward, and also to another alderman in Ward 3, and also to the mayor, and the requirements that the mayor is requiring, we need a paper signed by all the residents that they are okay with this idea. And I have that. And no band or loud music, and no alcohol drinking on or in the street. And also, the street will be opened back up at 10:00 PM. So, they've agreed to adhere to all those requirements for, and it's just strictly a family get-together in that 800 block. And there's eight houses.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Bertle.
Our only concern is, this has come up since I've been on the council, I think, two other times, and there was a lot of discussion. I believe one of them got turned down. One down on Poplar Street, I think they got approved. So, I just want to make sure we're not playing favorites here, or appear that we're playing favorites. So, I, I don't know.
Did we do any research on how many block parties have gotten turned down over the course of the last three or four years? Because it...
The only one I'm aware of is the one that you're talking about. And I think we've agreed to look at these on an individual case-by-case basis, depending on the location and the traffic in the street, and the proximity to any businesses. And this is out there, but there's no...
I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I just, I want to make sure that we're being fair across the board.
Well, I agree with Alderman Walters. I think we have to do it on a case-by-case basis, obviously. If, if it's on a, a street or a block where it's extremely high traffic or something our emergency personnel have to use as a route to get somewhere, then we'd have to say no. So, again, I think location is a big...
And one thing before, if I may, I, I will be informing you, based on the vote, and I will be informing the public service people, the fire department, the police department, and everyone else about that date and the time, so that they're aware of it.
Thank you. Alman Heatherling.
If I might, the, the family that's requesting this, it's for a celebration of family members that are coming back from a long-term mission trip. They have spoken to all of the neighbors, and there was one neighbor, elderly lady, that had a little bit of concerns, and they have taken care of her individual issue. So, I, I think that this will be one that's well-received, and it'll go quite well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenaz?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero. Range to city attorney updates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, I don't have very much. We are over the dome, Hole-in-the-Donut annexation now. I assume Clerk Peabody will be moving on to the Springfield and the Cheney Streets. I assume that those letters have gone out quite some time ago.
No, they haven't gone out yet.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll be working on those. As everybody knows, these are the ones that we basically currently have services, and based upon our new ordinance passed, I don't know, a year or so ago, they, they need to come in. And then, we, we will send them a letter telling them what they need to do, when they need to do it, and what it's going to cost them. And it really doesn't cost them anything, does it, Alman Dorchenaz, if they agree to do it?
If they agree to do it, we're, you know, there's a, there, there is a fee if, if you have objections to coming in.
Right.
And then, whatever route that goes, if it goes to court or whatever, and you're forced to come in anyway, then you're going to have to pay the fees.
Right. But if they, they do it in a, a time certain that's set forth in a notice, then basically, we'll, we'll pick up the, I think it's, what is it, $100 petition fee and the plat. So, that'll be going on. The Kim Morton matter continues in, we continue dialogue with her. We're waiting, I think, I have not seen anything, Mr. Mayor, unless you have, or any of the aldermen. Joe Green was going to put together a plat showing exactly where that particular creek is in relationship to the permanent and temporary easements. You know, I can't remember what the name of that creek's name is. But I haven't seen anything like that yet. So, they're probably waiting on us, or on Joe. Haven't heard anything from Mr. Graham regard, Graham regarding the housing authority. I think it'll be interesting to see how that whole thing plans out now that he took the iron stakes off. Hopefully, they will not resort to, to driving over that, that right-of-way that they tried to grasp. I'm still waiting for the, and I have not heard anything with regard to the plane crash investigation. It's my understanding, it's still ongoing. And I, and I, as I reported to you before, the people that I've talked to basically said it, it has to be completed before we can, we can start talking about, can we get reimbursed from somebody other than the owner? And we do have the owner's, you know, that's, that's a good point. I'll make, I'll send the owner a letter, although I'm afraid that he may not, or that company may not have been insured also. When it rains, it pours. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Alderman Heatherling? I mean, it's Alderman Dorchenaz, and then we'll go to Alderman Bertle. I'm sorry.
You must have read my mind.
Whoever I insulted, I'm sorry.
You read my mind, because it did have something to do with that. You need to go first, or?
Well, if I can.
Alderman Bertle.
I just had a question about the annexations up by the airport. Bernie Kirby, to be more specific. I mean, I got a few notes here from, a letter from your office, this dates back to December 7, 2010. I got another letter from the, the mayor requesting basically the same thing. That was May 26th, 2011. And it doesn't seem like either Mr. Kirby's wanting to cooperate, but all the things that we stipulated in here have since passed, and doesn't really seem like we're getting anywhere. So, I didn't know if we needed to do something else, or if it'd be wise maybe to send it back to, I think it started maybe in water, if we could send it back there and discuss it again, or what we need to do.
Well, yeah, if I could respond, respond to that. There's been a lot more going on than, than what, what's shown on the face. Of course, he agreed to, to have two different properties, one of which we need to clean up, okay, based upon a conversation I had with Clerk Peabody, not realizing that the particular business out there sets on four different tracks. And, but he is aware of that. We've had conferences with Superintendent Spiegel and Superintendent Wiseman with Bernie Kirby. Superintendent Spiegel has provided me with numbers that Mr. Kirby requested. It's just a matter of basically getting back in touch with Kirby, having, and I just talked to him less than a week ago. He was getting some eye work done or something, I don't know. Anyway, but we will get him back in, you know, obviously, Mr. Kirby wants to be compensated for all of the things that he wants done, which it's my kind, my understanding, Superintendent Wiseman, it is kind of a screwed-up mess there with regard to water lines. He did, Mr. Kirby didn't even know he had a sewer. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, well.
Surprise.
Um, anyway, so there's been a lot, it's kind of been ongoing, and, and I will get in touch with them and get them in. He, my last time I talked to him was, again, like a week ago. We've been having trouble cooking up. But I think in the end, we'll be successful in avoiding litigation. I hope so. But I think we're basically at our last straw at this point in time. He always cooperates enough to, you know, to maybe, maybe it's me, maybe keep me at bay, but, or else he always has an excuse. But he's going to bring his son Joe in, and we'll wrestle. And, and I think it's just a take-it-or-leave-it type situation. Either you come in, or we'll just go test the waters. And knowing, burning like I do, just like everybody, nobody wants to spend money that they don't have to in litigation, okay? And this city included. But, but that is on the, the burner, and we'll, we'll follow up with that. And I'll probably need to, to tag Team Wiseman and Spiegel here, because they've been out there, they know what's going on. And so, I'll probably be asking you guys to sit in on that one again, picking yourselves. Their excitement is just overwhelming.
If I could, just one more point. I mean, the letter from the mayor gets pretty specific about our right to turn off water service, disconnect sewer, sewer service. And with all the people we have in the audience tonight, I just, you know, sometimes when you look at these, and it doesn't seem to be going as speedily as it should. I mean, this has been going on almost two years now. It seems like we're giving Mr. Kirby a little bit, maybe preferential treatment compared to maybe somebody that we annex in tonight. I don't, I don't want the public thinking that of the council, that we're treating somebody differently because of maybe who they are, or whether, how many businesses they have in town, or for whatever reason. And I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with him like we are everybody else that was in the audience tonight.
No. He has been treated the same as everybody. It's just that some of the others have, you know, have one or two properties at best, and he has five, six, seven, you know, depending on how you, 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 I think they're about five, as far as parcel numbers are concerned. So, we're making progress. It's just slow progress. But, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if this council wants to instruct me to just basically send him a letter saying, "Look, you know, if you don't, you know, don't agree to annex these properties in within a time certain," because I think that's basically what we did in the beginning. But with all of them, we cooperated trying to avoid litigation. Whitelines, Assad, I mean, I just go down the list, corrugating steel, all of them, you know, it's not high priority, but they all ultimately cooperated. And I know the mayor was involved, I think, in Whiteline. Is that fair?
Yeah.
So, I mean, if that's what you want to do, that's okay by me. I make more money in the courtroom than I do outside the courtroom. But I think, I, I would ask, I guess, maybe to give us one more run at it, and to see if we can instill the fact that this is going to take place. Because he can't, he cannot afford to have his water turned off on certain locations out there, that's for sure.
Well, not that I'm pressuring you directly tonight, but is that run, does that take another six, eight months?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Two months?
We'll, we'll get him in, we'll, we'll tell him how it is, and we'll give him a timeframe. And then he, then his fate is in his own hands. And that'll be no more than a 30, 45-day period of time.
Okay.
Let me get him in there, and Joe, and, and his wife came the last time. So, yeah, let, let me, let me get them in there in conjunction with two superintendents behind me, and we'll put the, it's just one of those things, you know, gets, gets caught on the back burner. That's really the only thing. And I think, I don't know how many times Clerk Peabody, you and I've said, "Well, what are we doing? What is, you know, what are we, what's going on with Kirby?" So, not we, it's me. I'm not, but, but in her the mix.
Alman Dorchenaz.
Okay, well, we're on this, I'm on the same track as Sean. I could have done what he done first, and he wouldn't have anything to say.
Uh-oh.
Anyway, I, I've got the same question, because I've got, you know, I thought that, I don't think, I don't know if the council took a vote on it, but I think the consensus and opinion was that we're going to try, try to tie up all the loose ends inside the city. For example, these people were here tonight with the Hole-in-the-Donut, okay? And so, you know, I would, what I've been doing is I'd go to Pam, and say, "Okay, Pam," and she'd point out different ones. And there's a couple out on Springfield Road. And, and in fact, I talked to her today because of the fact that after I asked her, I haven't been keeping track of, I know where I've asked her to do it, but I haven't kept, kept track of the details, for example, exact the names and the addresses and that. So, I asked her today if, if maybe we could put together, she could put together some methodology of file that we could say, "Okay, Ernie asked this property to be annexed, and what is the status?" Okay? Because, because, you know, we've got the flow chart, we do send letters, et cetera, okay? And so, rather than have to pick her brain all the time, I could go into clerk's office and say, "Could you give me the folder or whatever?" And I could say, I could find out myself where it stands. Now, it's going to be a pain in the neck for her to, to get this initially set up. Hopefully, it's not going to create a big burden for her. But anyway, so there was a couple of these, like, and my suggestion with this is, I've got this, this is a, this is the Bernie Kirby, May 26th, 2011, and it, it named, there's two properties on there that, that haven't been taken in. You know, it, it seems like to me, it's, it's always easier for me to tackle a problem if you're, if you're, rather than eat the whole elephant, just take it a bite at a time, okay? So, instead of taking those, messing with the two properties, maybe just pick on one of them, and deal with it, and get it done with it, and then do the next one. And maybe at the same time that you, if you're going to do the first one, and he's going to be cooperative, maybe he would just say, "Okay, go ahead and do the second one," other than stretching it out, okay? So, that, that, you know, and so that, what I've wanted, been wanting to do, and I've been getting ready to do this, come down and talk to Pam, but I've got some other loose ends. I got one here that, and I talked to Rob Heatherling about tonight, Metheny, that, out there by Gekner's. And there's a, a lot of story behind it, but one of the, I had Pam send him a letter, and Mr. Heatherling intercepted that, because he had talked to somebody, Mrs. Metheny, about an issue with it. So, that's, we've been sitting on that. And Rob, I, I think he had a question about grandfathering, and this is a, a particular situation, and he's going to have to ask for the, you know, ask you for the question maybe tonight, or you want me to ask it.
Is this the one on Shumway Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. We, we held a, a three-way telephone conference, Pam, Peabody, me, and Dick Wiseman. I fourth-partied in. Mike Janazy, okay? Now, it's, it's my understanding, and I'll defer to Superintendent Wiseman, and you probably know all this, Alman Dorchenaz, but I don't know whether everybody else does.
I did.
But this is a lot, this is a house that's on the west side of, of Shumway Street out there. And we don't have jurisdiction. Superintendent Wiseman brought up that we don't have jurisdiction over that, nor do we want it. We don't want to be having to maintain that. And it's my understanding in speaking not only with him, but also Mike Janazy, that for whatever reason, well, and again, Superintendent Wiseman tell you that, that we can get, do some type of a governmental, what do you call it? Don't, uh...
Transfer.
Transfer, okay? And, and that transfer would result in, in Metheny being contiguous to the city of Taylorville. According to Mike Janazy's...
I think.
They changed their mind.
They changed their mind.
I'm always the last guy to know. Who changed their mind?
Cliff Frye and Mike Janazy got together and discussed it.
So, now, now, now they're contiguous?
They are contiguous.
They're contiguous.
Well, just, just erase everything I said. I had, I had a good story to tell here. I thought it was kind of interesting. So, what, what they basically did was, they said that her property line goes to the middle of the road.
Yes.
Okay, then, then we're okay.
Okay, so that, but that's not, okay, so we're ready to fly, okay?
Good.
We're ready to fly, with the exception of Mr. Heatherling.
Okay.
He's got a, he's, he's learned more about the issue.
Now, you, now, may I preface something? I hate the word grandfathering in, but go ahead. Go ahead.
It's a term I'm familiar with.
Oh, absolutely. It's, it's a term, it's out there all the time. You're right.
This young lady purchased this property when she did, because she had three dogs, and she had a problem with the, problem with the neighbors where she lived at. So, she thought she was going to move outside of city limits where she would not have that issue. And then, she comes to find out that it is eligible for annexation when we, when she went in to try to get the water turned on. Now, she only has three dogs most of the time, but every once in a while, she rescues dogs, has them in her house for a very short period of time. If she's within city limits, and she has more than three dogs, then she is subject to an ordinance violation, even though on her, let's see, be the north side, the west side, and the south side, she doesn't have any neighbors for at least a half a quarter mile. Her closest neighbor would be just on the east side, and only because her property line goes to the middle of Shumway Street.
Right.
So, my question would be, is, is there something that we can do that would enable her to continue to rescue dogs without being in violation of the ordinance on maximum number of dogs?
Well...
That's the only issue here.
Sure.
She has no, no intent on building a kennel or building any additional building. She has a house and a garage.
So, so she doesn't have four dogs now.
No.
She just might have a fourth dog in a rescue attempt.
For a short period of time.
It's not a truly rescue, it's, but, so the dog doesn't die at the kennel.
Right.
Okay. Well, that's totally up to the, the city council. I mean, you know, the problem is whenever you start deviating from, just like this gentleman tonight with the, with the shoulder-high weeds out there, I mean, you know, you're either in the city or not, or you're not in the city. And if the city council wants to make some so-called exceptions, they certainly have the power to do that. And in this particular situation, I think that the, I think we did the same thing, that we said no more than three dogs, but at, at any particular time, you can have more if they, you know, have puppies, or kittens, or whatever you call them. But you can only then have them for six months. There's nothing that says that this council couldn't put an exception, similar exception, to, to anybody that rescues a dog. Now, George, I, I know George Cowherd, because I work with him closely on ordinance violations, and I'm not, I'm, I'm pretty confident that he's not going to like that, because then every time he turns around, he's going to have to investigate every single four dogs or one dog, see if the one fourth dog got rescued or not. But can the council, council do it? Yes. And I think that's what they have to do, though, just to be on the safe side, is to have, to commit to writing in, or, just like the mayor said about other things, about these guys, you know, committing to writing, getting this council's permission to, to have an exception. And I'm not saying that's not a bad exception. I mean, that, but then every Tom, Dick, and Harry's going to have a dog, a fourth dog, and they're going to say, "Well, I rescued that dog." Well, rescue to me is a formal rescue from, from the county, Christian County deal. Or they also have, there are people that rescue dogs all over the United States of America.
Right.
Okay? And we've had, on Chief Hurst Street, or not, but he was personally involved with one that we handled. So, then, then all of a sudden, you have trouble defining, you know, rescue. The, the true rescue is the, the dog that's rescued at the county, whatever, animal control, or these people that actually get online and, and rescue dogs. That's a long-winded answer, and I apologize.
Alman Dorchenaz.
Are you saying...
Are you saying then that, you know, this is ready to be annexed? All they have to do is pull the trigger, let the letter go? And should this be taken care of, the, the suggestion? Should this lady come to one of our committee meetings, or?
I, I think that would be an excellent idea, Alderman Dorcheness, just so that maybe we can address that before we get them in, because then, then we're looking...
Here's my concern, is that, you know, I'm in, let's say I'm in the same situation, I've got a house somewhere else, and you wanna annex me in, okay? Well, I, I want the same thing. I'm, I'm rescuing dogs.
Yeah.
Where are your dogs? Well, I just haven't rescued them yet. And I'm just saying that it's, it's, you know, I've experienced so many things where, well, even, now, I'm not gonna beat on this lady, she, I mean, she's gotta have the heart as, as big as this room, but, you know, they've already got around the system once, and...
Sometimes, I think what you're, you're, what I think you're saying is, and you're exactly right, the buck has to stop someplace. And, you know, you can continue to make exception after exception after exception, until it comes to the point where George Cowherd cannot police that particular area. I mean, you know...
Well, and I'm, and I'm not suggesting that, you know, she comes into the city, that she does something wrong, but, you know, it is a rural area.
Right.
So where's the, where's, where...
Where's the harm? Yeah.
You know, who's gonna complain about...
Why are you bringing her in?
You know, that, that's something...
It's just one of those loose ends.
Yeah, well, but we, every time we go out there and grab somebody that specifically moved there for a reason, again, to be able to do this kind of stuff and have it a little more relaxed, and now we're going out and grabbing all these people. That's what we all gotta keep in mind when we do this kind of thing. You're affecting people's lives. They located there, they built there for a reason, and now we're changing that reason on them, and, and so we're, the more and more stuff we do here, the more and more of these kind of cases we're gonna have to deal with, and they're gonna say, you mean I can't do this? I've been doing this for, my family's been doing it for seventy years, and, and now...
What I'm saying is, you, I think you have to treat everybody the same, okay? For example, when they started the daycare center out there, maybe they never thought that they ever had a chance to come into the city. They don't wanna come into the city, obviously. So, you know, you say, well, we're gonna bring you in, but we're not gonna bring you in. I, that, that's, to me, is, is where you get in trouble.
Well, that, then, and if I could comment, and Alderman Dorcheness, that's why we do it by the hole in the donut, because if not, we'd have to do like we do on Cheney and everything else. So, yeah, that's, that's the easy way to do it.
Allman Coontz.
As far as the dog situation, I think the gist of why we made that new ordinance was to avoid those problems like the cattery, and people having eighty, hundred animals in their houses and stuff like that, that was the gist of it. So, I think, I could've, could be wrong, but I could've sworn that the comments were, as long as, like, if it's a fourth dog or whatever, as long as it's not a problem, we're not really gonna worry too much about it.
Yes.
And I don't know how much, you're the chairman here, but the bottom line is, you don't know how many of those things over the past two terms, or the term and a half, or term and three-fourths I've dealt with, though, in conjunction with the police, and everybody remembers that mess down on what street with the fifty cats?
Probably.
You know, going around. We had another one where the gal had, I don't know how many cats down in the, I think there were cats. They might've been dogs, but, you know, then she'd move them, and then she'd bring them back. So, and, and they're not, they're not cateries or, or kennels, they're just people with a lot of, a lot of animals.
Right.
So, it, it, and sometimes those, those don't reach you gentlemen, just because you have enough paperwork already, but, but they do exist.
Okay. Alderman Burdon, then let's bring this to an end.
Well, not to argue the point, but you were stating earlier about people move to a particular area for a certain reason, but what I, what I don't personally like, is that I moved out of town to get away from the city, higher taxes, all this stuff, but I need city water. And everybody thinks that city water comes just because you pay double, outside the city limits, you pay double. Well, that, that's not the only thing that, that comes with that. It also comes with an annexation. And that's where we tend to have the failure to communicate. They either don't know what they're signing, or don't care at the time when they're signing it, or, I'm not sure why they sign it, if they don't wanna...
Because you don't give them any other choice. If, if they want the water, they have to sign it.
You move down, they get away from the city.
Right, right.
So, if you wanna stay away from the city, if you truly wanna stay away from the city, then move out of town, stay away from it. That's, I mean, that, I just don't understand why you wanna be outside upon a couple of things that we have.
Sure. Well, I mean, I, I think it's very understandable, but we've been talking about this for thirty minutes, so let's move on. Anything else for the city attorney?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Moving on to mayor updates. We'll go through this real quick. Just a reminder, Chili Fest takes place on the thirteenth and fourteenth. Historically, at least, some members of the city have gone up there and served chili and stuff. I would, once again, extend that offer to all the aldermen. It would be an excellent chance to show our support for the event, if we actually show up there and, and man the tent for a while. We have a special city council meeting next Monday, the twenty-fourth. We've got two items on that, and the agenda will be coming out for that. And today's Constitution Day. Constitution Day commemorates the formation and signing of the U.S. Constitution on September seventeenth, seventeen eighty-seven. And, you know, the date it signs is definitely a historic date. The paper's written on, and the signatures of those founding fathers are also historic, but its effect is supposed to be ongoing and continuous, something that many of our current legislators seem to have forgotten. So, I hope they take time and kinda read the Constitution, and it's, it's not dead yet, despite their efforts, so. We'll move on to committee reports. Discussions and or motions to approve, adopt, and or deny, and or table, and or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. Go to emergency services committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's this two motion that came out at, at that meeting, and it was a motion to allow Police Chief Hurst Creek to purchase two computers, including monitors, from Patrick Four-Linone at a cost of thirteen hundred and ninety-three dollars each. I'd like to make that form a motion.
Okay, you got a second?
Second.
Same, Allman Heberling, discussion or comments? Hearing and end roll call.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Moving on to personnel committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. There was one motion that came out of the Personnel Committee. The first is a motion that Mike Cruzby reimbursed the educational tuition expense in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents, and I offer that as a motion.
Okay. Second, Allman Jones, discussion or comments? Hearing and end roll call.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to Water Environmental Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. There was one motion that came out of the Water Environmental Committee meeting. It was a motion to raise the rate for the Limaville Public Water District ten percent, establish the new rate at three dollars, nine, nine cents per thousand gallons for the next twelve months. I'd like to make that form a motion.
Okay, you got a second on that?
Second, Your Honor.
Allman Walters, discussion or comments? Hearing and end roll call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
The next motion is to direct the mayor to sign the professional services contract with Crawford Murphy and Tilly Incorporated to provide engineering services for the airport-related projects.
You got a second on that?
Second.
Allman Lawrence, discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
The last motion to come out of the committee was a motion to enter into agreement with Crawford Murphy and Tilly Incorporated for Elmoi Project TAS four oh nine six, and Elmoi Block Grant number three dash seventeen dash oh one hundred dash B thirteen, to construct taxiway A extension on the south end at the Taylorville Municipal Airport at an approximate cost, total cost of eight hundred thousand dollars, and to direct the mayor and state clerk to sign the same.
Okay. Can you go a second?
Sure.
Allman Lawrence, discussion or comments?
Question.
Go ahead.
Could the chairman of this state for the, the news media, eight hundred thousand, how much city's gonna be responsible for?
Approximately sixty thousand.
Thank you.
Now, that will be done in phases. It won't be all upfront or required at one time.
Additional questions? Roll call.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Alderman Lawrence, discussion or comments? Hearing and end roll call.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchens?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
John Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchens?
Yes.
Rob Heberling?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Bertle?
Yes.
Randy Dorchens?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have a motion to approve and ratify payment of bills in the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and one cent.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor, with a comment.
Okay.
Second, that's Your Honor.
Second, my Alderman Walters, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Lawrence.
Your Honor, if I may, I'm gonna start with a batch of bills from Green and Bradford, and the big bill we're paying with buyers' construction for the lake dredging.
Reggie?
Uh, have a little trouble with both. Uh, first of all, with buyers' construction, uh, they are billing us for the completed work, and they're done for the year on, uh, dredging the Locust Creek contract. Uh, they have removed twenty thousand and twenty cubic yards out of the thirty thousand the engineer, uh, estimated, uh, that they needed to take out of that Locust Creek. Uh, attached to that bill was Green and Bradford's letter that they were done for the year, the September second rains, uh, brought the lake back up to normal level, and effectively the, uh, we didn't have, uh, dry ground to take out. Again, attached to that bill was Joe Green's basically statement that he had verified that twenty thousand and twenty cubic yards, uh, were removed. Uh, and then, in looking at the sixty-four thousand dollars worth of Green and Bradford bills, uh, by far, all that sixty-four thousand is our continuing street and sewer, uh, uh, ongoing contract, uh, except for one, which is in the amount of twenty-one hundred and sixty-six dollars, and Mr. Green is billing us for that verification of the twenty thousand cubic yards. And strangely enough, his bill for the time in that certification was dated July twenty-sixth, which is basically a little more than a week after the committee approved the go-ahead. And I am basically, I discussed it with Superintendent Jackson before the meeting, uh, I'm still confused, as Superintendent Jackson said that they did agree on, within a few cubic yards of that twenty thousand he's certifying to, but it's inconsistent that he's billing his time and his staff's time on the twenty-sixth of July. So I am recommending we pay the bill, but I would like to inquire as to what was the work, extent of the work done on the twenty-sixth that he's billing for.
We can definitely ask him that question. I, I do know I was out there, and I saw his crews out there, Joe's crews actually out there that week, whatever they were doing, I'm not specific, but I saw them out there in the trucks, uh, alongside the road there.
Well, it couldn't have been on the twenty-sixth, because it, I thought on the thing, uh, just before the rains, which was September second, okay? And same way, uh, uh, he's recommending we pay buyers entirely ninety-four thousand without any retaining issues, and I'm just not happy with that verification of sediment removed. Uh, other than that, uh, we have our almost normal big-ticket items, our workman's comp is coming in, it's monthly twenty-five thousand and eighty-four.